Adequate notice of the meeting to be held by the Belmar Board of Education on Thursday, October 27th, 2022 at 7:00 PM has been provided in accordance with the requirements of Chapter 231, Public Laws, 1975. Notice the meeting was posted on the bulletin board in the principal's office of Belmar Elementary School, 1101 Main Street, Belmar, New Jersey on January 18th, 2022. Notice the meeting was transmitted to the Asbury Park Press, the co-star, the municipal clerk of the borough of Belmar, and the Lake Como School District on January 18th, 2022. Can we please stand for the class?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Can I have the roll call first?
Sherri Adams.
Here.
Ms. O'Nack. Kimberly Chek.
Here.
Brian Conklin.
Here.
Dana Fay. Rebecca Herbert.
Here.
Michelle Lomas.
Yes.
Jennifer Nicolai.
Yes.
Robert Preston. Michelle Cartaglia.
Here.
Okay. Do we have any comments from the public on agenda items at this point? There'll be a second public commentary. All right. Well, welcome anyhow. Can we have the superintendent's report?
Yep. So the superintendent's report, it's going to be two things. I'll do the presentation really quick. It's not going to be as long as the last one, but there are a few things that I do have to report out on scores for the spring SLSL science portion of that. And then the NJSTART strong. We have preliminary results. I'm going to forward towards moving forward, but this is the basics of it. The science from last spring, what you'll see is the BES data is here, the New Jersey data is here. Our fifth graders did a little better than the state in meeting with three and four, and then pretty, you know, just a little better than the state on that one. Our eighth grade science scores weren't as strong, but eighth grade science scores weren't as strong across the state as well. But we're evaluating all the standards that have to do with the science standards for fifth and eighth grade to make sure that we're prioritizing what it is they're asking us to be able to do and how do we move forward and do that for our students. But these are students who are no longer with us, and these are students who are now sixth graders. That's basically it for the science scores. And then START strong, which we had last fall, and we had this fall as well. We just finished that window. So I have data on all students. It's basically a lot shorter than the NJSLA, but it just gives us a small set of priority standards every year, and in ELA math for grades four through eight, and science for grade six. So we'll be providing information to our families on the START strong information. And then, like I said, preliminary reports is going to basically help us understand what the child's, what they understand in tested content, a description of major concepts tested, and starting points for discussion. And data we may be able to use in collaboration with other pieces that we have here at the school, whether it's NJSLA in the spring or IREDDI data that we have from the beginning of the school year. So there's going to be three categories. They need less support, which means they did pretty well. Some support, almost there, and then strong support means that we're going to have to bolster up whatever we can to help those students. So I'm just going to take a look at last year and this year really quick for ELA. We're at 41% of our students needed less help. Now we're at 46.7, which is a 5.7% increase. It means that our students are more ready to start the school year than they were last year across the school. And so you'll notice that we were 36% needing strong help, and now down to 30.7. So, you know, that's really great. It's dropping here and increasing there, which is exactly what you want. 5.7% is nice, and math even better. We went from 23% to about 12%, not exactly. It was like 11 and change or so. And so you'll see the same pattern here, right? We're getting less here, less here, more here, which is what we want. Our kids are more ready for math this year than they were last at the beginning of the year. And then science, same thing goes. We had a huge increase here from 15%, which it makes sense. You know, you figure during the pandemic, what did we focus mostly on? Math and ELA. Science probably took the backseat along with social studies to some extent with limited amount of time that we had with students. So it makes sense that last year we had a full year. Our students are now more ready for science than they've been. Does that make sense? So we'll take a look at this data, START strong, NJSLA, benchmark readiness assessments, and then our IREDDI performance data, which is all internal. And we take that and we identify, okay, what are our areas we have to identify for focus, not only in the classroom, but also in our intervention systems for our students. And then we want to make sure our curriculum is aligned, which is part of our strategic plan, long-term goals anyway. This is just a little more information that helps us make those decisions about what is it that we're really going to focus on. And all these tests are going to say, hey, listen, you're short on this. This is the one thing you need, the few things you need to work on. So we make those adjustments in our curriculum and make sure that we cover those pieces. Okay, that's it. It's not as long as last.
Can I ask a question on IREDDI? So did that data come from a certain chapter they do in the beginning, or is it from like their year-long data?
So IREDDI is going to give you a baseline assessment every year depending on your grade level, right? And it's going to put the kids through this assessment window, and the kids sit down and when they take this test. And what will happen is as they start to do well in certain questions, it starts to get harder and harder until it reaches that kid's level. And then it goes to the next subject and does the same thing. So what it'll do is it'll search and try and start low, get to your grade level. If you exceed it, it's going to pursue you even further. And then what I know is I don't have to give you grade level work on IREDDI because you're already past grade level. I'm going to give you something harder. And that's why it's individualized to each student. But I also get data as a teacher saying, hey, 30% of your kids are almost there. 20% are there. There's another 10% that are exceeding, and there's a few that are further behind. And then they can work on their, use that information in classroom instruction, and then also when the kids go to small group. I might take three students now and say, hey, you three are going to work on IREDDI that's individualized for your specific needs, and then you come to me later. So that way, there are times being used effectively with something that's targeted for them specifically.
It would be math, 22% strong help needed. Is that not a very big red flag? It's saving almost half our students.
Yes. And so we saw that in our NJSLA data too, that we have a group of our students that need a lot of help. The good thing is it's less than it was last year, but that's why we're really focusing on, okay, what's the most important things? One of the things we're doing as a district in every grade level is identifying the standards. If you try and teach every single standard in every grade equally, you're not doing it right, right? There's some things that are just more important than others in every grade. You know, with first grade, you really have to understand adding single-digit numbers and how to carry to make tens, let's say, right? But there might be something that may not be as necessary in first grade. Important, nice to know, but you're going to see it in second grade anyway. So what we have to do is identify what's most important, what's at the core. What is our test data telling us about what our kids are missing? Because they'll actually tell us, hey, these are the test questions. 80% of the kids in the state get this question right. Only 70% of your kids got this one right. So then we have to say, why is only 70%? Let's take a look at that question. What is that standard asking kids to do? And if we're not doing it, let's start doing it. And so that's why this year with the structure I created where teachers get to collaborate every week for 40 minutes protected time outside of their practice, that's what they're looking at. They're taking a look at data, taking a look at their standards, they're taking a look at their curriculum. And I'm giving them the autonomy to do that because I've never taught fifth grade ELA. And I'm not going to step in and tell them how to teach it. I want to guide them and say, you guys know best. Where should we be spending our time? What do the results tell us? You know, we have a math and an ELA coach as well that puts into that as well, but we all are. But it's not going to be me telling people who've done it for 20 years. It's me asking you questions and getting them to collaborate on good answers to do so. So yeah, this has all been part of our plan about how do we bring the bottom up? How do we get our middle students who are really close to pass? And I'm hoping that we'll see results in the spring. It's going to take a few years for this whole systematic change to really take form, but I'm expecting to see some of it. Any other questions? All right. Thanks for that all.
Thank you.
And the rest of you.
One in doubt?
One in doubt. So our Junior National Artist Society just got its approval. Melissa Murphy put in her application, and so we're up and running. She's getting a committee together of teachers that are going to be her deciding committee when kids are applying. If there's any issues with academic integrity or something, there's a committee that handles those things. So that's really positive. Our aftercare for BES registration is open. I'm also working with Monmouth County Child Care Resources, which is an organization that helps find subsidies for families that need aftercare. So if you're a free and reduced wage child, it may be possible that that family would qualify for subsidies to have free aftercare for their child. What I'm hoping that does is gives, not only creates a stronger program there for our paying parents, and so it makes it so that we have a sustainable program that doesn't go away. I know the pandemic kind of put us in a spot where aftercare went away because a lot of people were working from home, but I want to have a strong enough program that I know we can rely on. And if we do have a strong program, champions will give us more flexibility and more options. They really want three and five, five-day options right now, but if they have enough participation, they'll be able to offer us more flexible options knowing that they can staff it. And so what this will do is offer that service to families and then hopefully help out some of our high schoolers who are coming back to pick up their grade level, you know, second grade, third grade siblings, and maybe they can be more involved in their school life and then get back here later if something, if their siblings are being cared for until 5 o'clock or 4:30 or whatever time it would be. So I'm hoping that this is like a full-on approach. They're going to be coming in with translators and in English and in Spanish to help people apply for the subsidy. So they're going to be coming during our conference time. So when parents come in for conferences, it's going to be a resource I'm going to be pushing for anybody who's eligible to try to apply to kind of build a program. I'm working with the director over there and reached out to her, and she said, oh, I'll bring a team. I said, great. Send me flyers. Let's get this thing going. I want to build something successful here, so I'll feel you there. Yeah. Hispanic Arts each month was a great success. We got a tap into an article showcasing our diverse staff and, you know, the roles they play here. Mrs. Brady and our specials teachers, you know, had programs, announcements, all types of great stuff throughout the entire month. It was really wonderful. We have professional development on 10-10, not only for us, but we invited all the sending districts to send their specials teachers art, music, gym. And I said, why don't you guys, if you guys have the same day for professional development, why don't we house it? Bring your people. And everybody's like, all right, because they never really get to collaborate. You have one art teacher in a building in Seeger, in Brielle, and, you know, and all these other towns in Spring Lake, Spring Lake Heights. And so they're able to all collaborate, get some ideas together, which doesn't always happen for them. So it was really nice to be the home for that. And then we have evening parent conferences coming up. So thank you to Pam Lockwood for helping to schedule that and for the team negotiations for making that possible. So now our parents can come from 5:00 to 7:30 on one of the nights. Almost done. Voice soccer playoff game tomorrow against Seeger. Go Eagles. And we had a really great season for all of our fall sports. That's it.
Okay.
I want to thank Whipple Watches and Motors.
Fascinating.
Wait, they're not watching them?
They're lucky jerseys. You're not supposed to watch lucky jerseys.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes for the September meeting? Mr. Conklin, any corrections or modifications? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jack.
Abstain.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Lomas?
Yes.
Ms. Nicolai?
Yes.
Ms. Cartaglia?
Yes.
And Ms. Adams?
Yes.
On the side, just abstain.
And we have personnel next.
Okay. Aunt Anne Tannen, who's currently our sixth grade, leave replacement is going to be taking over Ms. Tannencredi and Pre-K. Yes, she has a middle school cert and a Pre-K cert. So super capable, and so I think she's going to step in that spot next. We have some substitutes, wrestling coaches, volunteer wrestling coaches, along with Mr. Lomas, who's not on the volunteer list. He's also the assistant wrestling coach with being paid by Manasquan, but working with our students here. So Elizabeth Barker is a replacement for art teacher. Like I said, the Manasquan schools wrestling coach, Mr. Lomas, volunteer basketball, Mr. Donovan. Rebecca Wagner's going to join Michael Klaus in the girls' basketball coaching. So that's going to be good. We're going to have a team of two for that that hire and replace teachers and professionals for an important meeting, and that Alex Flores gets to utilize teaching case studies for confidential format to do her clinical supervision hours to get her lessons.
Can someone move, anybody, someone first move the personnel items, sir, or Chuck? Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Ms. Chek?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert?
Yes.
Ms. Lomas?
Yes, but abstain for three and five.
Ms. Nicolai?
Just checking that Mr. McDonald is not basketball coach? Or was he?
He is, but the girls' basketball coach is Mr. Klaus. I think last year we had Mrs. Porter.
Yeah.
Right, Porter, but she's out of maternity leave. Mr. Klaus is going to do girls' basketball. He did girls' soccer.
Okay.
And then Ms. Wagner's going to join him. So he was previously approved, but she wasn't approved to split, but they decided that.
And Matt's assisting with both?
Matt's going to assist with the boys.
Boys, okay. Yes.
Ms. Cartaglia?
Yes.
And Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Operations Education items?
Oh, operations, yes. Travel and PD on the board schedule, field trips, coverage maintenance plan, health and safety education checklist, which we sent out to the county. It's just basically making sure that we're compliant with what we're supposed to be doing. The foreign department is requesting to use the auditorium on December 17th for the children's party, their annual party, and the Girl Scouts would like to use our facilities as well. Those dates are there. Student participation in youth government day, which is kind of like a field trip, but they go out and our middle schoolers, they learn about public service and the different pieces that make up our town.
Will they be having a student board meeting here, Chuck? Or they're just doing with town? Because we always had it with, they also took members of the board. They had, before our regular meeting, they had their own little meeting. They passed resolutions and stuff.
Oh, really? All right, I'll check it out. I did get information from Mr. McDonald, who's running it. And, you know, he gave me a list of all the different positions and how they would shadow somebody and there would be a staff member, you know, at the municipal core or town center.
Did they get people to sign up for board members?
I don't know. I'll check with them. I'm going to ask them.
They haven't included it, I don't think. It doesn't sound like it.
They might have. I'll ask them.
Yeah, they did. It was a choice.
Oh, they did, huh? Well, they've always liked it because they come with these resolutions. Sometimes it gives us new ideas for things.
I'll check.
And they have their little meeting and they pass.
Yeah, everybody wants to be there.
They've even had like their planned dialogue where somebody objects to it and.
Oh, yeah? Cool. I think he said they'd sometimes do a mock trial as well. So that's kind of really fun for the kids to be a part of. He was telling me about it, and I was, yeah, I asked him, I was like, so what's this really? But it sounds really cool, so let's do it again, of course. Technology order for sea lavender, collaboration with Chatty Tree Commission. So the Chatty Tree Commission wants to create a tree nursery here at the school, which would be boxes where we plant small trees, have our fifth graders plant them. By the time they're eighth grade, these trees get placed in our community. So the kids are kind of responsible for them, get them started, get them watered, especially in the beginning, and then they keep track of them and take pictures with them and then try and find a home for them. So I thought it was kind of a cool thing. And then we have some Monmouth Ocean Education Service Commission premiums.
Thank you. Can somebody move the operations items? Ms. Chuck, second. Ms. Adams, any questions or comments on anything? Okay, and roll call, please.
Ms. Chek?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert?
Yes.
And Ms. Lomas?
Yes.
Ms. Nicolai?
Yes.
Ms. Cartaglia?
Yes.
And Ms. Adams?
Yes. We have new policies, onion policy readings.
The second reading.
Second reading?
Just the second reading.
Okay, so you want to. Can someone move the policy items? Chuck, second. Mr. Conklin, any questions? We did go over these at the last one. These are the second readings. Okay. Roll call, please.
Ms. Chuck?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert?
Yes, except for P24016201.
Is that a note for that?
That's a note.
Ms. Lomas?
Yes.
Ms. Nicolai?
Yes.
Ms. Cartaglia?
Yes.
And Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Well, sharing on the finance side, we're supposed to.
So we have our monthly certification for our board secretary's report as of September 31st. And we only have two motions, one for the bills for $1.5 million, and then number two is the secretary's certification for the secretary's entree for the month of September.
And someone move the finance items, please. Server, Lomas, roll call, please.
Ms. Chuck?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert?
Yes.
Ms. Lomas?
Yes.
Ms. Nicolai?
Yes.
Ms. Cartaglia?
Yes.
And Ms. Adams?
Yes. Any correspondence? Any old business?
That's the national board report.
I did.
It's on the prior page at the very bottom.
Oh, the very end.
Except for almost either, because I wasn't able to go. I had a work event. I know they opened the field house and they got a tour of it, and it's been used a lot.
It's gorgeous.
I don't know anything else about it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Field house is really nice.
Yeah.
I got a tour when I went a few weeks ago.
The kids are excited. They like it a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So batting cages that drop down. That's, yeah, it's really neat. Yeah. Wrestling room and everything is really, really interesting.
Well, I have one thing to add on that one.
Okay.
So the esports team yesterday competed at a board. Oh, will be? Well, because they can't talk about it until they have the need, and go ahead. Sorry. No, go ahead. And the Manasquan team competed, and they walked away with the championship for the Garden State Invitational.
Wow.
That's awesome.
Yeah. Second year in a row, right? Second year in a row. So, well, last year, so two years ago, a year ago, I'm trying to remember the date. So they originally, the very first year that they did esports, they actually won the New Jersey State Championship. But this one is a little, is an invitational for Garden State Esports. Garden State Esports is their own little entity. So, yeah, so they won the championship.
Wow.
That should, wait, no, Tuesday. Tuesday.
Very exciting.
Yeah, it was Tuesday. Yeah. So I can't believe you didn't go see it. I sent you a text.
I know, I know. I forgot.
Hot topic on the school boards?
Yes.
He was too busy. They had a booth set up.
I know. They had an esports booth. I was there. You didn't text me.
I was watching.
I texted Michael.
Yeah, she did. She was going crazy there, yeah. Beautiful, big. I forgot about it.
Yeah. It's crazy how it's taking off in scholarships and all the colleges are getting huge esports rooms. Yeah. Daxton has a huge, Brookdale is now putting in a new.
People go to watch, probably, again.
Yeah. Brookdale's putting in a whole new facility.
We used to go to the pizza place and watch people play Street Fighter or Combat, but that's, you know, it's only like five kids watching.
Yeah. So they won in Rocket League. It was fun. It was, they were very excited.
I did pass by there. I did. I didn't realize what it was, to be honest. I thought they were just my beer.
They were funny because they weren't allowed on the floor. They were like, oh, but the kids weren't allowed on the floor. Like, we had to stay in the booth.
It was a big one.
It was a big one.
It was, yeah.
But it was funny. They were like, yeah, we could go outside, go back to the booth. Did you mention that? I'll also mention that the girl, the girls' soccer for the first time since 1980. I told my daughter, I was like, I was five. That's crazy how long.
I was just born.
They won, they won the North Division. They were co-champions.
Wow. That's cool, though. It's great.
So long time to get that. And both the girls and the boys won their first round of state championships, and they're headed for the second round. So next week.
Do the girls continue?
To state champions. State champions.
They do.
Yeah. They have, the girls play tomorrow. Yeah, the boys play Monday.
Somebody asked me last meeting whether we could use the field house. Because, so the field, the field house, the off-hours are being run by the Manasquan Department, the recreation department, not by the school. So that's.
So when they were building it, that's how they pitched it?
Yeah, so the community.
The town and surrounding towns.
Did they? Because they were. I just asked all those meetings. Yeah, I heard the town, not surrounding.[1492.11]
So you have to check with the Recreation Department. That was my bad. For the off-hours.
Yeah.
Sure enough. Two AM.
Not fast.
Um, okay, any old business? The new business? I just, uh, we did, I was at the school board's convention workshop, as was Michael and Jimmy. And so, um, you know, they had the big giant esports thing. They had a lot of things. They had a big electric vehicle, did you see that? So they had a lot of good programs and things like that. One of the things they had was a, a board member that is also a parent, which I know many, most of you are. So I got this materials that they handed out. I thought it were helpful. It gives you like five tricky situations, parent, board members and what you can do. So I think it might be helpful to have. And then I'll give you guys the rest. Sometimes it gets a little tricky, especially in a smaller town. How it goes. And then, uh, I don't think, is there any other new business or anything we need to discuss? I'm aware, okay. We'll have comments from the public on any item at this point in time.
Does it have to be on this?
No, any comment.
So I'm getting a little like, I have four kids that come here currently. Um, my one son is in eighth grade and we just did the tour of Red Bank Regional. And it was a bunch of Baltimore kids that checked out the school. And I was just curious, um, that some of those kids liked the school and want to go. But it seems like because they have to do an academy program, like it deters some of those kids. So some of those kids who might like the school better has to do it. Like, how come they have to do it? I guess is my question, like, I'm, I went to Red Bank, I like the school. I like that, but I do feel like we deter some kid, like some kids who really would like to go there.
That is, uh, we have a send-receive relationship that's been existing for decades.
Wait, so what was it?
We have, already have a send-receive relationship. Um, and we have, it's longstanding between Manasquan and Asbury and other places that have academy programs. That's how they are able to get other people in the county to attend if it's not your regular sending district. So it, and that's why in Red Bank, it's one of the academy programs that they don't, wouldn't have a comparable program in one of the sending districts. So you can only do that through that process. I mean, you could go and pay tuition, but in terms of the board sending you, yeah.
So if you pay tuition, you don't have to do academy?
Well, if you pay tuition, then you're paying for, if, if they accept tuition students. They don't have to, but they might.
But you can't choose an academy that Manasquan would have.
Right.
If Manasquan has the academy, you wouldn't, you can't go to Red Bank for that academy. Unless you want to pay tuition.
It's got to be something we don't offer.
Yeah.
That they don't offer.
I don't think it's that, um, like it doesn't really stop kids from going there from my, to my knowledge. I mean, I think every kid who really wanted to go there, they chose something and they were able to achieve that. Like, I don't know any kids who were denied, um, going to Red Bank. So I don't think that those, the kids that are feeling that maybe they're scared to apply or whatever, I don't think that they should be deterred from pursuing it because if they know that, oh, all the kids that tried got in, or I don't know what the stack.
Yeah.
Well, I think that was, that was from being like locked in, like, I want to go, I love this high school. I really, like, I like the feel of it, I like the diversity of it, I like a lot of things. But I don't want to have to do engineering. I just want to take my math, my science, my history class and just.
The general education.
And just, right.
Yeah, that's just not the way the send-receive works. And, and if we were to just decide to send people wherever they felt like going, then our sending districts who we have this established relationship from years ago, decades really, like the fifties, I think, then they would have a potential claim against us that we're diverting tuition students from their district by just sending them. And the only way they got around that really is how these academy programs came up. Because other schools developed specialized programs that weren't available in other places and they were able to take more kids.
If I can just add with my daughter there, you know, she was terrified having to take a test and it was very easy. Um, the other thing is like whether Jack was there or not, you know, he was looking at the different academies and he spoke to those different groups while he was there. And the kids and the teachers were like, oh, it's so simple, don't worry about it. You know, you don't want to say, don't put effort into it, but you know, just like Rebecca said, don't let that deter them from wanting to go.
No, I don't think they said, I think they just wanted a regular high school experience, maybe just not at Manasquan.
Yeah.
With a lot of, with the kids that I was talking to.
So, but don't, I think, but doesn't.
My, my son being one of them, he, he did like the school, but he's not interested in any of the academies. So basically it eliminates that forehead. Unless I want to pay tuition.
But I think all the academies RBR offers such as Manasquan, but I don't think that's all.
If they do, then we, when you're sending them.
Do we know which ones conflict?
I think they're on working hours, they're in finance.
I'm sure you can.
I, I can find out.
Finance, uh, at that.
The finance, I thought they developed, but the finance academy has been there, math, finance. My daughter was in it.[1623.11]